Well, there's been an awful lot of changes in the state government. And it's all coming back down with mandates and things coming on to the towns and villages. It's just gotten to be too much for local getting back to revenue.
Too expensive, you mean?
Pardon?
You're saying too expensive?
I don't like the idea that the courts lost money for the last three years.
No, I don't, well, I don't think it should, myself.
I mean, like, say you go uptown right now and you come down through town to get a speeding ticket. You're gonna get a card, the card's gonna tell you, contact this number, take an online course. It's gonna cost you seventy-five dollars. If you spend fifty bucks taking the online course, chances are the ticket will get dismissed. The other twenty-five posts accounting, towns and villages, wherever the speeding took place, they get absolutely nothing.
Makes sense. So what are you gonna do, combine it into one court?
We can put it, no, we can turn it over to the town and then we're out of it. The only thing we have to do is keep any past records we have to maintain. From there on, we don't have to go.
So how much is it gonna save the village?
I'm thinking around probably fifty-eight, sixty thousand a year. Is that a month?
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments on Justice Court?
Well, there, I was gonna say just the last. Okay, I support combining, as a past judge here. I went through and tried to put my mind to work to why this would be a better situation. And over years, we've wanted to sit, keep the village court. And I tried to come up with the thoughts of why I changed my mind. First one was the economic saving for the town, village, and for the county government. And therefore, comes back to the taxpayers, saving money by combining. Better uses of resources for the civil legal services for the lawyers. They have one court to work with, combining them for the defense attorneys through Mike Young's offices as a legal defense, and the district attorney's office. Two courts, they have one court they have to transport to now. With this, I understand they still have to go to the higher court, but it would make one court on one night to transport. I looked at the administration. I know that the DA and any lawyer's client working now would have one court to come to. It wouldn't have the village court have to go to the town court. It would make it easier on the DA, less paperwork, knowing there's one court to deal with. I looked at one of the things being accountability within the courts. The physical accountability, in other words auditing. There'd be one court, there'd be one auditing process instead of two right now that we deal with in the courts. The opportunity for lawyers to serve as judges. One of the big things in the state is they want lawyers in the courts. One court with no lawyer, like the town, the town has now, would be what the state is looking for, to have lawyers as the court judges with them. Working with the office of administrations, the court administrations out of Albany, it'd be a better oversight for them with the commission of judicial conduct. The courts would look at, instead of looking at two, would have one court to look at. And that's one of the big things is the oversight with the courts that we're seeing now is that with the change in the laws that we have, particularly with the marijuana laws and the other laws that are now being changed on defendants' rights, it would be much easier to have just one court for the overlay. The other thing that comes up now, I believe the village court asked for officers to be there for security. I understand that. And that's one of the state's big things now in the court system is that there has to be security for the courts. Right now, if the villages want to provide officers for the village court, that could be overtime, it takes the officers off patrol, where we're not getting the protection to the taxpayers with it. The training for the officer, village courts and town courts. If we go to one court, then we only have one education that we have to send a person to, rather than the town sends people, the village sends people. So there's a cost saving there where we only have one training session that a new judge would have to take versus when I took it. There was town judges there and village judges when we were there taking our training. So there are cost savings there, and there's less training if there's a lawyer running the court. And I guess the last thing was, my personal thing, was accessibility for the local residents. If we have one court, they know what night it's on. They should understand a better time to access the courts rather than have two courts with different times when they're holding court. And that's always been a thing. I can remember people coming in thinking that they were coming to the town court, but they weren't, they were coming to our village court with it. And I guess to wrap it up, my opinion is if one court can give fair and equal justice and overall savings for both town and village and the county, also, this is a win for all our parties. And as a footnote, when we're talking about the physicalness, and Mr. Beagle may have to answer this a little bit with his expert knowledge. I believe the law for the town and village combined law is that if a village ordinance or code is, a person is ticketed, that money goes back to the village. If it's a B and T traffic stop, that money goes to the town. So the money is split up. The village would still get money if a code or ordinance was broken by somebody and they were ticketed with it, that would come back to them.
Well, the village would still get their parking tickets, too.
With, and the parking, yeah. So those are what I came up with, what my ideas are. I think it's a win situation for everybody by combining.
Any other comments on the Justice Court? Well, the July 4th regular board meeting minutes?
I'll make the motion that we approve the July 4th regular meeting minutes.
Second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have a special meeting on July 29th.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for the special meeting July 29th.
Okay, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm staying.
Okay, I haven't had a chance to talk to Dan or Ed at the Finance Committee here. I just wanted to say we got approval, vouchers come out. Normally, we approve all the vouchers the same. Tonight, I would like us to approve general water and sewer, combine them if you want. But the capital fund, we need to do a little bit different because I have not had a chance. It just came in at three o'clock this afternoon. Highlander constructions pay apps that they're looking for. And I think we need on that one to prove it, pending a review of that payout by Paul and myself. And then we can go ahead and cut checks.
Okay. Everything else on capital, we're good?
So now I'll move on, and that's the main reason for the capital one. Approval of vouchers, I think.
Okay. In the general fund, we have sixty-three thousand eight hundred eighty-two dollars and nineteen cents. The water fund, one hundred eighty-three dollars, one hundred eighty-three thousand seven hundred twenty-three dollars and ninety-eight cents. The sewer, one hundred seventeen thousand three hundred sixty-one dollars and seventy-six cents. And I guess we'll recommend that the capital, this will put off, and we're probably...
Well, let's do the capital stuff.
We're gonna do, just make that a motion. We will make a separate motion for the capital to, for, you want it for three hundred fifty-eight thousand?
Yeah, it's three hundred fifty-eight thousand eight hundred, what I say, let's get these first three approved first.
Okay, I think so, I'll audit it, and I make a motion if they be approved.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, we just, like I said, I'd like to separate one on the capital until we get a chance to review that payout.
I make a motion that we suspend the capital for tonight until...
No, I don't want to suspend it, but pay it once Paul and I have reviewed the payout.
Okay. I make a motion that I'll review by Mr. Beagle and Mr. Dinesh. If we pay the capital in the amount of three hundred fifty-eight thousand eight hundred forty-nine dollars and eighteen cents. I'll second.
All in favor? It's just, like I said, that came out late this afternoon. Five Streets Utility Reconstruction Project.
Well, Kevin's a little out of the weather right now, so I'll fill in best I can. But I've been following...
Did you beat him up that bad this morning?
I don't know what happened, but I've been involved pretty much since the beginning anyhow. So as you know, the Highlander payout you just referenced, I agree. I want to get with you guys, and we probably need to go do some measuring in the field to make sure there isn't any discrepancies. We want to get this one right, it's a lot of money.
Kevin might, Kevin might have already seen some of that.
Yeah, but I think he was just on the phone with Brad and we're not on eye right now. Yeah, so we want to go do some measuring in the field.
I just don't want to rush him.
I agree with you, yeah, let's get it right. Yep, I'm all for that. But as you know, they've milled some sections on Trinity where we've had the drainage issues. And hopefully, we'll be retopping them here soon. That's what the plan is, is when we can line this paper up. And I don't know, if there's any questions about the budget or if you wanted to get into any of that, then, if not, then that's Five Streets update.
I talked with Paul, I talked with Willie yesterday. He said all the new signs have been ordered, as soon as they come in that we get up.
Yep.
What is that gonna be? I've heard this story for a year and a half now that St. Street does not have a sign and people are driving by to go on to pass gate. You know, I was told by a board member that the sign would be out by the fair. We don't have the old one. Why can't we put the old one back up until the new ones come out?
Nobody knows where it is.
Well, I can tell you where it is. The last time I seen it, it was in the back of a village truck. I've seen him pick it up.
I don't know, we'll look for it, but all I know is it's not as easy as just going out putting up a sign. First, we have to go through, through the whole contract and see what signs had to be replaced. Then, once that was agreed, then the signs are ordered. I'm sure as soon as they get here, they'll be put up.
Well, I was told we were already ordered.
Just like every construction project, you don't go through street by street to put signs up.
Oh, I understand.
Contractor has a subcontractor that puts signs up. Once the job is near completion, they come back in and replace the signs.
Well, the old one shouldn't have been taken down. Every other street that was worked on, they still have their tops.
No, they don't. All those, some means they were worked on, they're gonna be replaced with new signs. We hope to have this all wrapped up by next month.
Yeah, just be a little more patient, we're right on the one yard line.
Basically, the, no, I mean, the contract, they don't even have to have it done till the end of September. So we're still okay.
So at the end of September, if they're not up, I can holler at them then?
Well, I didn't hear you, I'm sorry.
I said at the end of September, if it's not up, I can call him and holler at him. I'm not from a policy.
And then the village can start paying them a thousand dollars a day to, for having the work not done. And that's in the contract also, I'll have you know.
Beautiful.
It's not done by such and such a day, they also...
What's the date?
Highlander.
No, what's the date it's supposed to be done by?
Off the top of my head, I don't, I just know it's in September.
So act over first, if the sign's not up, I can start. I'll put that on my calendar.
Is that what we had on that, then?
And I believe the striping is gonna get done this week, weather's pending.
Yeah, that's been a gamble lately, but you're right. And that'll follow along right behind the topic.
It's closely done yesterday, but I haven't seen it in the morning.
Right.
Maybe Friday.
We'll pause here for a second because last month, we were supposed to award Citizen of the Year award, and the gentleman couldn't make it, but he's here tonight. So for the Dan's project, I'd like Dan to award Josh Fitzgerald, Citizen of the Year, our award.
Josh is here tonight, and the sponsor that turned in the winning essay. As you know, this is the first year for the award. And Josh, as many of you know, one of his big projects is he does the backpacks for the schools. He now does a, help me, correct me if I'm wrong, Josh, a confidence building initiative for students on Saturdays. It is, it is a business. And the essay, I didn't bring the essay tonight, we had it to the last meeting, was well-written with a lot of accomplished, which Josh has done. And so on behalf of the village, Josh, here is a plaque for you for being the winner of the year. Come on up, Lee. And Lee, we have something for you for turning this one off.
Thank you.
Glad you had you.
Okay, moving on. Phase two wastewater treatment plant upgrades.
So we rebid the Lagoon contract and the mechanical contract on Monday. We'll open bids September 8th, right after the holiday. And that'll give us a time, a week or so to review them so we can make the recommendation for award at the September 15th board meeting. And then the plan will be to have contracts in place in October so the whole shop drawing process can begin and ordering of materials and the liner. So when spring comes, it's at the top of their list, which was a problem that we had when bidding during this summer. So that will be out of the curve for next year. And along those lines, we had the pre-con meeting today for the general contract and the electrical contract. And what we learned is most of the work is not gonna get going until they thought later fall, which was defined as October. So we thought we'd have a groundbreaking ceremony, maybe early to mid-October, and then, and then there'll be some work that gets done between that timeframe and when winter really closes in. But obviously, the majority of that will pick up up in '22 and kind of go hand in hand with the Lagoon part.
Do you have anything on the groundwater?
Yeah, so we're continuing the approval process with the towns of New Bremen and Watson and Lewis County, so we need site plan approval for the project in those three, or those two townships in the county. And simultaneously, we're continuing to advance our drawings for Department of Health and DEC submission, which we're attempting to get out to coincide with those approvals by the end of August. You've gotta somewhat have your local approvals before you go to the next level with the state approval. So if all lines up, the end of August is our plan, which is only two weeks.
My notes are going before the planning board tomorrow.
Yep, so as long as all goes well. That's it for groundwater.
Street lighting LED conversion program. That's kind of moving right along. Basically, the only thing we lack that we have to submit to National Grid yet in order to close is our letter of credit. Pam and I have been working on it, Pam's done most of it, working with the bank. We got a draft back today that we approved and sent back to the bank, so we should be getting our... So we can get it into National Grid, because we'd like to be able to close in September. Because we're also hearing that Carthage wants to close, I think it's the 22nd of September. And talking with the New York Power Authority, they're looking for areas right now to, staging areas to bring in supplies and things to be able to start. And I know they're hoping that they can start in Lawville and Carthage, because we're the two biggest areas for, for the lighting, so... Keeping our fingers crossed we can get this, get in before the 20th and close next month. Hopefully, start putting some street lights up in October. Unless you have anything different than that, Nick?
No, you pretty much covered it, yeah. That's what we're planning on, is a group going in September and another group maybe starting in October. And as I said, one crew of two guys will put in about twenty-five to fifty lights a day. So we'll take them where they need to.
The big thing on this is we're trying to get it done before December 31st. Can we send a share into...
The county shared service.
County shared services, we could get a pretty decent chunk of money to put right towards this project if it's completed by December 31st. Okay, draft, local law zoning change, manufacturing homes, planning board referral. That's on the docket for tomorrow also, but I think we can go ahead tonight and schedule our public hearing for, say, next month.
Mark's okay with that?
Yeah, I mean, what I'm asking is that you've gotta make some tweaks to the law based on what the county might tell you after their meeting, but you'll have time between now and public hearing to do that.
But we can still schedule the public hearing and tweak that afterwards if we had to, right?
If you do, maybe you have to go back to the county if the changes are substantial. Next meeting is September 15th. So I'll make a motion, we set the public hearing for the change in the zoning law for guarding manufactured homes for September 15th, 2021.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Draft, local law zoning changes, smoke shops, tobacco stores. That also is going before the planning board tomorrow, so it will be one of them. Schedule that public hearing?
I'm gonna make a motion to schedule that public hearing for regarding changes to the zoning law for smoke shops for September 15th, 2021.
I'll second that as well.
All in favor? Okay, downtown public parking signs.
We do have them. As some of the village residents are aware, we have turned, well... We've had issues with people in the crosswalk down by the Historical Society crossing there. Quite a few people have almost got hit. So I got in contact with the DOT. We made a plan, going to change the center lane. It's gonna be re-scribed, so people shouldn't be moving over into the center lane to go up to the four corners to take a left. So as a lot of people are aware, you cannot pull into the Upper Commons parking lot anymore. Do not enter sign. And basically, that was a recommendation, talking with DOT, that it would definitely help. Along that line, they are gonna put up some new parking signs. So I'm gonna get in coordination with them before I put these up. And once they get their set and get everything set, the other ones will go off.
Anything you want to report on music and art, Dan?
The concert this week was canceled due to the weather. Fred and Enzo have agreed to play on the open weekend of August 31st. On Tuesday, the final, that'll be the final concert now. Back UConn will play next Tuesday, and Fred and Enzo will close the concert series on the 31st.
Draft local law, I think we'll just pass that one for a little bit, leave the public hearing open in case somebody shows up. Re-zoning industrial zone options. I wonder if Joel was gonna look that over, wasn't he?
Yeah, that's something, I haven't had a movement on that. Came out last meeting. I needed a copy of everybody.
But Joel was gonna look that over, too.
No, safety.
Didn't want to pass it over.
I just told everybody that I was looking into a part of it, but I haven't had a chance to.
Does anybody else have any unfinished business before we go on that I don't have down here? No, we'll move on to new business. Craft surcharges, the June 2021 was zero, so I guess I don't have to do anything. All right, a resolution for cream cheese festival detour. I know I talked with Jeremy Papino yesterday. He was up in Maine having, enjoying the weather. Told me that it might get scaled back a little bit, especially the, over there, Discovery Park, because COVID keeps going the way it is, he's not sure, they don't want to bring that many kids together at close. They're still working on it, but meanwhile, I guess we can go ahead and pass this resolution for them.
Has the state approved opening or closing that road?
They deal with the state directly, we don't.
Yeah, I guess I understand that, but yeah, what is it? I'm assuming the state has already done it?
Because they get the detours, those electronic detour signs and everything from the state.
My next question is, being that this is a state road that Crap should have asked this years ago, is it a moot issue for the village to approve or disapprove?
Well, it doesn't hurt to do it, because you're also assuming the detour, which is over here. And by doing that, it kind of pushes, I mean, I'm, listen, I'm all for the cream cheese festival, but we didn't have one...
cheese festival, but we didn't have one last year. 2019, I think it took me a good half an hour to get from Trinity Avenue to Jackson Street, which is fine, but there's some, there's some issues that it creates. There's nothing we can do about it, really. It's, anytime there's parking or whatever, the people are parked all over downtown area, so.
It could be a little different this year because.
I'm hoping so.
Well, I mean, where they park, because a lot of the streets got curbed and all, they can't pull off like they used to.
The greatest thing they did, I think, are doing that shuttle service, as the people that are being done, but.
Just get a couple tow trucks and start towing them away.
Yeah.
It'll stop it after a while.
Somebody like a motion to pass, pass this resolution for cream cheese fest?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I guess the other thing we could do, we could recommend to cream cheese chairperson that they possibly hook that, talking with maybe the fairer support board, maybe hold it down there, where the parking and things would be more.
Maybe, maybe one of the things we could do, though, is put cones up and block off parking on some of the streets and force the issue after they're drawn from parking. That might help a little.
That's what I said, I know that, but I agree with that. On September 21st, 2019, my blood pressure was a little higher than it is right now.
Don't worry about the safety.
It was bad. It was, I almost got it three times, I mean, it was bad.
That's why I go to my mother and ask my walk-up tongue. All right, tap grant application.
I'm going. The actual application needs to be in by September 29th, and I'm working on it.
Basically, what this is, is we did it, I think, maybe four years ago. It's for replacing sidewalks and safe routes to schools and like that, so. Trying to get the grant to do it again.
So hopefully, somebody picks that sidewalk on Cascade? Because that's impassable right now. And remember, you went and talked to them, and they cut that shrub back? Needs to be done again. Because I saw an older person fall the other day on that street, on that sidewalk. Something needs to be done, so.
Basically, on this grant, we're going to go in with the town, so I just wanted the village to aware that we're going to share any engineering expenses and things with the town of Lawville. Board members have any questions on that?
Probably have a motion to do it.
Yeah. Do you have a motion to go in with the town of Lawville on a tap grant?
I'll make it.
All in favor?
Aye.
We got a few budget amendments here, a couple of them. We need a motion to.
I'll make a motion to approve the budget amendments as presented by the clerk treasurer.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody else here have any comments on office of village justice? If not, we need a motion to close the public hearing.
How many promotions to close the public hearing there? I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so I'll go back to draft, local law, Balla, office of village justice. If you want to go ahead and do it, or table it for the next meeting, or if you want to go ahead and do it, we need a motion to draft the local law.
Well, to adapt the local law, but it's subject to a permissive.
I will make that motion stated by Mr. Jeevo.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Correspondents. New York State, Fire Facilities Corporation. Groundwater Project Grant. Let's see the letter on that, approved our. Basically, I'd ask for an extension, maybe approved our extension, because we had to make the changes there, I don't know where to run stuff. Anybody have any questions on that? Correspondents from the New York State D E C on the wastewater treatment plant, phase two plan specification technical approval. Basically, they've approved the, what we've put out to bid so far and accepted. Excelis Flu Cost. Basically, it has a notification saying that there could be a rate increase coming down the road. Basically, isn't that what it is, just letting us know we could be getting.
That they're asking for that, yeah.
We don't know what the amount would be yet.
I'll say 8%.
They're asking for 8%.
We've got a good report from the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, sewer plant down there. Everything's in compliance. One test we don't have to do for another than four years, 2025. And we got the River Area Council of Governments, updates. Here we see, but Mickey came tonight because he also wanted to, maybe touch base on a couple of them, so if you want to go right there, I won't make you wait till the end.
So basically, we've been continuing, we will have a meeting here probably September or for a Rayco board meeting. And there is a tugboat community survey that's still going around that side, that link is on the top of the, of the monthly report there that you probably have. And so that's going to close at the end of August, so we're just encouraging the public to fill that out. And then we have a floor drum intern that started here in August, was working out of the commission office in Watertown. But he'll be with us until October 17th. And he's actually currently working on one of the projects right now for Rayco, which is the, we call it the Friends of the Black River Group, which Tim and Chuck are part of there, or I guess Tim is, right? Yeah, Tim. And then, so we're doing a historical floating museum idea along the Black River, so as people go along the Black River floating, they can pull up the historical information along the river in some sort of app or maybe a map, we're kind of putting that together right now. So he's going around and meeting with all the different historians, going to be contacting them, try to get that information and pull it all together. So he has actually started that. I know he was a governor of Lewis County Historical Society, not longer, I think it was last week here, with them, and he'll be meeting with others too. That's to move along. And the other thing we already covered was LED lighting, which is moving forward, and other than that, that's pretty much what I have at this point.
Just one question, Ricky.
Yeah.
The grants assist things on the back.
Yep.
Where it's got deadline and there's no date in there?
They didn't really list one, so it probably means it's probably the end of the year, is most likely, they just didn't put down a deadline on there. And there was actually, I don't know if that one has a new one, but there was a couple of workshops, Jefferson County, I just got it today. I sent it late to Pam with an updated version, but Jefferson County has a planning board overview workshop, and that's on September 27th at 6:30 P M.
Any questions on the table? Thank you, Mickey.
Your turn.
Got correspondence from Peter Keys, Town of New Bremen supervisor. See that letter, regards to landlord?
I certainly have some questions on this. First, it says that the landlord will be here tonight, there may be a reason he couldn't attend, but obviously, I guess Mr. Keys was fairly strong in his wording to you.
I didn't think it was very professional letter to give him.
Well, thank you. But anyways, if it's something that they can prove that we did, then I say we've got to correct it, but I think I heard you discussing it the other day, and the issue is, that's nothing that we, we can find that we did.
Well, all of them, just Dan, so you know, Paul, I said, I talked with Mark, and then I'm going to talk with Paul, and we've kind of, we have an idea we want to pursue, that they want this to go away.
Okay. Sounds good to me. But I think, I think supervisor could have recognized your lack.
All right. New York State D E C approved the handsome amendment on the engineering agreement. Kai Moen, the D E C's approved those. Questions on any of that? All right, officers committee reports, village attorney.
Not, not a lot. We did work on a personnel issue. They could send someone over with respect for it, but it's attorney client confidential, so we could talk about it.
Mayor, I have a couple of things. I got an email late this afternoon. Sandra Newell notified me that the counties got, they were awarded a grant for downtown blockade improvements and things, but also included in that was streetscapes like that, trees. So I think there's been, municipalities can put an application in. So there's a couple of things downtown that I got the ball a little bit, I would say we just got this at 2:30 this afternoon. Couple areas that I think we could do some street shake downtown, and actually, the village applied for this grant.
Do you, in that, in that round, I know that we have a business that's concerned about the height of the trees and the way they appear on the signs. Has there been any more thought positive to add?
Matter of fact, you want to talk on that, Paul, or are you just?
Still a work in progress?
Pretty much, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Put it to you this way, hopefully, we'll have something down there by next year. It's getting late in the air anyway.
Well, we, you know, the, the theory for what we're trying to do is, is very, very good.
The trees have gotten overgrown.
And the people that I've talked with, apparently, I'm not a horticulturist, telling me that there's certain trees you can have that only grow, I guess they're like bidget trees, which I can wait. And that might be something you can look at.
The other thing I got, and this one I really need to bring up, as you all know, Pam Rose is going to retire, she's basically the village of Lawville. So the Personnel Committee met, interviewed, like.
Four.
Seven applicants, I think it was four interviews, that came close to being able to do Pam's job. They settled on one lady, her name is Danielle St. Louis. And she, right now, works for Bowers and Company, the county firm in Watertown, New York. She lives down here on Route 12, near Port Lyden. She is a Lewis County resident. As much as would have liked to have seen somebody from Lawville, lovely one. Should say, the Personnel Committee went with the best qualified candidate for the job, and this lady's got, also has. The village needs somebody that really understands the county. So I'd like to make the motion that we appoint Danielle St. Louis as clerk treasurer for term to run from September 1st, 2021, to March 31st, 2023. Need a motion to.
Are you making that motion yet? Are you making it?
I, I'd like to make that appointment, I'd like some.
I'll make the motion for you.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And if any board member wants to see your resume, I'll spring it here.
We had seven applicants. I'd like to say we had seven applicants. We interviewed four people, and I don't think we could have asked for anything better if we had had 70 applicants. All four candidates that we interviewed are very impressive.
Very tough decision to make, Dan.
Right, the boss, yes. Clerk Treasurer.
I would say it's been a privilege and an honor.
I've been with Pam off and on since 1995, couldn't ask for a more faithful, dedicated employee than Pam Rose.
Well, you got to be so mean, or.
I'm going to miss it.
Chief of Police, do you have anything?
No, I didn't, of course. It's not going to be a must, and if I don't want to, they won't accept it. Other than that, I have nothing.
Superintendent?
Superintendent, working with a company out of Florida on our fountain. Just got, we've been kind of going back and forth, back and forth, trying to get a fountain to, that would actually fit in the area that we have up there. I think we've got one narrowed down, just late today, I actually got a price on it. I still got to go over with everybody on that, but we're hoping that we'll have a fountain before the end of the year.
Is something we can lift?
Excuse me?
Is it something we can lift?
No, it's, this fountain is actually buried, so it'll be up and we'll never have to do anything to it. That's all I got.
Capital future planning?
Uh, nothing at this time.
Personnel?
We'd like to request the executive position to discuss the personnel issue.
Finance?
Audits for the officer now update through, updated through July, so.
And the judges, I think they're a month behind that, so.
Attorney Parva?
Nothing much to report there. The next meeting is August 29th, or August 30th, August 30th at 7 o'clock, and I will be attending.
When did they ever make out that roof leak, Dan?
Oh, yeah, that's a good question, Tim. The company, according to Joe, he's not here right now, has agreed to take care of it, the way I understand it. There was a, there was a warranty that, and the roof's like 10 years old, and the warranty's for 20 years, and they're old and under, and I don't think the leak was too bad, so.
Might have been around one of the, you know, benders or something like that.
Yeah, I, I can't.
Police department?
No.
Planning board, zoning board? The Conference of Plan Committee decided to not meet in August. Their next meeting, I believe, is, I think, kind of first is a Wednesday, as far as that goes. One thing I wanted to mention, and I was going to do this at the end or whatnot, but as well as echoing Dan's sentiments about Pam, a member of the Conference of Plan Committee and bill, and town board member, I just wondered now if they're passing a roof flareby as well. So I don't know.
That is kind of a surprise, I think.
Yeah. Other than that, nothing to report, the meeting will be next month.
Municipal board?
Nothing to report, for town.
Not with the town yet?
No.
County?
Yes, as, as we're all aware, the county has finished their study on the, on the county's water, which we didn't participate. Our mayor has responded to the, to the, to the findings, and I thought fresh release that Mayor Vigil did was excellent. The county is going to have a recap, and they've asked us to attend the recap. And at that time, I think we can voice our concerns. Pretty much that's all I have for town, Joe.
Recreation?
Some recreation has now completed, I think without a glitch. And it looks like through the vouchers, the payment has been, will be processed.
Will he be sending us a period report?
I will ask for it.
He sent one last year.
He couldn't have passed here, I don't know.
Excuse me, last two years ago, thank you.
Recall, we already had an report from that? Just on the public town.
Eric? Putting the load on me again.
Yeah, sorry, that, that.
You can handle it.
Ah, Dan, I'd like to congratulate, don't look so surprised, I really am not going to say anything.
I've been routine.
I'd like to congratulate you on the music in the park. It's really been nice. I wish more people had turned out. The one thing I would say is to get the word out better next year, because a lot of people didn't know about it.
I, I.
Well, we were getting for comment, but it's been very enjoyable. I think it's been excellent.
I did, I put a lot of flyers out and a few other things, but on tossing and turning, I could have done a lot better job promoting it. The problems today is, other than Mr. Altmeier, don't really have much news media left anymore in this community. Which in some ways might be good, but I think it's, someone like Mr. Altmeier keeps government transparent, and I've always been in favor of that. I think too much happens and people know all about it. I think we need to be transparent. I've enjoyed the music. We've got two more weeks, and I think we've got two crowd pleasers coming in. Doc Yukon is a younger group, a younger kids group, I say younger 40s, 30s and 40s. And the following week, Fredney Eds. And Fredney Eds, this is their last year, they're calling it their farewell tour. And they're out of Watertown, and they have a pretty good following out of Watertown. I'm hoping more people, comment was made to me, I'm hoping more people within the village will show up next year if we're able to see your grant and do it. I have any intentions of trying to get a grant again, but we'll see what happens. If we do, we'll do it again next year.
Yeah, I thought it would be very good.
Thank you.
Paul? Your turn. Are we going to have a new tree in the park?
Yes.
Before the end of the year?
Yes.
Joe and I are working on it.
I know who to get there.
Basically, I talked with a tree farmer, told him we can come in, pick out whatever tree we want. I've already got the price. It's just a matter of going out, picking out the tree, finding the right day here this fall to get it planted.
I might be able to get it for nothing, from a tree farmer.
Well, probably maybe deal with this one, but the price is right, so I don't have a problem.
Is it free?
No, but it's definitely great. First of all.
Who's cutting it down, Mr. Gepone, Charlie Chase?
No, no, it's a fire button, it would be bad.
Put it this way, some people pay more for a Christmas tree than I do.
Be appreciated.
That's not worth, that's been that if you pay.
And Paul, one question.
Charlie Brown tree.
Actually, my boss wants me to ask the question to you, but we'll do it after the meeting.
Be afraid, be very afraid.
You know who my boss is?
Yes, I have a couple of questions, especially with that gentleman right there. Now, I, I'm around the village a lot, and you all know that, you see me around all the time. Something that I've seen that's been bothering me is the village workers driving village vehicles, not just trucks, talking on their cell phones. And I think that sets a very poor example for the rest of us. And I think that should be addressed. Not just, I've seen bosses and not just the workers, the bosses too. And I have one other question. Why, I, I've asked this question of Danny a hundred times, but I've never got a straight answer. Why is the parking lots plowed before the streets? Because I know like Dan Street and Clinton Street are one of the last ones to be plowed, and it's usually after 7 o'clock in the morning, the times between 6:30 and 7 o'clock in the morning, before they're plowed, and the parking lots are all plowed. Don't you think that that would be a better use of village workers to do the streets first before we do the parking lots, except for the firewall?
I think they plow the parking lots first, because your average employee comes to work, you got to have the parking lot plowed out.
Yeah, you also got to be able to.
You also got to be able to. By the time we got done plowing the streets, the cars would already be parked in the parking lot, and we wouldn't be able to plow them.
Yeah, but what, it's, I'm thinking on public safety, the streets should be plowed before the parking lots.
They're, when they're plowing the parking lots, there's plows out during the streets.
Well, usually, well, usually Collins has an example, usually Collins parking lot plowed by, by 5 o'clock.
With a pickup truck and the loader.
Yeah, but if you took them, that pickup truck and put it down the streets like you do, you could have streets plowed.
There's certain streets we plow with big plow, and there's certain streets we plow with the pickup trucks.
I've seen you plow every street with a pickup truck.
I don't plow at all.
I know you don't, I think you're murdered. I'm using you as an, as a first.
We'll look into it.
But also, we're trying to, we're trying to eliminate the amount of plowing, I guess, done with the small trucks, because the big trucks.
Right, I agree.
The plows are heavier, they do a better job.
Well, I agree. I agree, I agree with you, the big truck can be doing it.
Any other public town? I guess we need a motion to go on executive session.
So moved, Mayor. I'll second.
All in favor?
For attorney's line for his communication and the person.
I think it's the same law.
Oh, it's the same.
Just wanted to make sure we did it officially.
All in favor?